We'd like to call this Greenville County Council Regular Meeting to Order after I make sure that people can hear me on the front row here. She's my audio assistant today, so we're good. All right. And she wanted to make sure that all council knew if they could eat the microphone a little more when they talk, because everybody can hear. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the invocation, and I'll call in Vice Chairman Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. A gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for a day, a day that you allowed us to have, a day that you allowed us to breathe, a day that you allowed us to see the sunshine. We thank you, Lord, for each one that's here. Pray, Lord, that there be a blessing to your name, that you take this time, that we are together, and that we'll be honorable about doing Greenville County's business. I thank you, Lord, for who you are and what you do and what you're going to do. In Christ's name I do pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Next on the agenda, we have the Approval of Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from both our September 16th and our September 29th meetings.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, we have appearances on current agenda items. Ms. Stone.
Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker, Greg Valente. His topic is 13B, Paris Mountain Text Amendment.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Do we need to, just for the county, do we need to approve both A and B minutes?
We did both together. She-
Oh, you did. I'm sorry. I missed that. My apologies. Didn't want us to have to come back. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Valente.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Hate to be repetitive, but I didn't want to miss another opportunity to thank you all for helping us with our zoning issues on Paris Mountain. And that's the entire purpose of me being here tonight, so thank you very much. I think what you've done is a great example of how council can work with the community to get things done for the community, and we really appreciate it, so thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have public hearings. We'll start with A, General Obligation Bond Request, Twin Chimneys. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. General Obligation Bond Request, Twin Chimneys. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $10 million Greenville County, South Carolina, General Obligation Bond, Series 2025-C, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating thereto. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak on this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, we have no speakers for this public hearing.
Madam Clerk, there being no further speakers, I declare this public hearing closed.
Counselor Collins, we move to Item B, Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Midway. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Midway. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park, of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park to include certain properties and other matters related thereto. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak to this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, we have no speakers for this public hearing.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, I declare this public hearing closed.
Thank you, Counselor Collins. And C and D were canceled. So we move to the next agenda item, which is the Consent Agenda.
Move Approval of the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, we have ordinances at third reading. We'll start with A, Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Midway. Counselor Collins.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Midway. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that I move for the adoption at third reading an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park, of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park to include certain property and other matters related thereto.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next is B, Terrapines Estates Special Tax District Boundary Adjustment. Counselor McGahey.
I move for adoption at third reading of an ordinance to enlarge the boundary to the Terrapines Estates Special Tax District to include real property continuous to the district located at 321 Terramont Drive.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have ordinances at second reading. We'll start with CZ 2025-054. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 259 Beacon Street and 101 Orr Street requesting rezoning from NC to NCMC, major change. The Plan Commission and Committee recommended approval. On behalf of the Committee, I move approval of this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next is CZ 2025-055. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 212 Gurley Street and 214 Moore Street and Bailey Street requesting rezoning from FRD to FRDMC, major change in R-7.5. The Plan Commission and Committee recommend recommended approval. On behalf of the Committee, I move approval of this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next is CZ 2025-056. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 913 and 915 Lakeview Circle requesting rezoning from RS to R15. The Plan Commission and the Committee have recommended approval. On behalf of the Committee, I move approval of this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next is CZ 2025-057. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 10696 Old Horse Road and McClaney Road requests rezoning from C2 to RS. The Plan Commission and Committee recommended approval. On behalf of the Committee, I move approval of this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have CZ 2025-058. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 1451 Donaldson Road and Augusta Road requesting rezoning from C2 to S1. The Plan Commission and Committee recommended approval. On behalf of the Committee, I move approval of this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move on to B, which is General Obligation Bond Request, Twin Chimneys. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. General Obligation Bond Request, Twin Chimneys. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that I move for the approval at second reading and ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $10 million Greenville County, South Carolina, General Obligation Bonds, Series 2025-C, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended to provide for the payment thereof and other matters relating thereto.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it. Move on to C, which is Greenville County Redevelopment Authority Transfer of Property on Worley Road. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville County Redevelopment Authority Transfer of Property on Worley Road. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that I move for approval at second reading and ordinance to authorize the transfer of 6.07 acres of real property located on Worley Road to the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority and to authorize the execution of deeds and any other documents and agreements related thereto.
Roll call. Mr. Chair?
Roll call's been requested. I think Counselor Collins may have had a comment as well.
I mean, may I, is it protocol to make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I was checking on this, and I know we're at, in our second reading here, but my only question was, when I look at the Worley Road at 6.07 acres, to give it to the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority, but yet we purchased 3.6 acres over on Southside Park for green space. So my question is, it just kind of, I just want to make a comment that we paid a quarter of a million dollars for 3.6 acres to add to a 65-acre park, but yet we're giving away six acres for affordable housing for what do they do with the Redevelopment Authority? So I'm just making a comment that I think, under the purview of the HNRT, at what point, I look at, when I look at their ordinance, 5247, I don't see any direct correlation to give them that authority to go beyond their ordinance. But that said, I just think it's kind of, the money could be used a little different, where we're given six acres away, but yet we're purchasing three acres for green space. I don't see that as making any sense or fiduciary responsibility, and that's the comment I want to make.
Thank you, Counselor Collins. Anybody else? Counselor Tripp?
Come live on Log Shoals Road, and you'll understand why they're given-
Freak out.
I'm sorry. Come live on Log Shoals Road, and you'll understand why the HNRT is trying to purchase additional acres for that park. It's a rapidly growing area, and I think it makes good sense, and HNRT is, you know, providing incredible return on our investment for the work that they do. Same with the Redevelopment Authority. We have an affordable housing crisis in Greenville County, as much many of the counties do across the country, and, you know, I don't know all the specifics of this, but just on the surface, you know, when I've heard Redevelopment Authority talk about their return on investment, you know, with the money that they get from HUD and the money that we entrusted them to build housing, you know, it's not just giveaway property. It's money that they invest and return back to the county. So I, I don't, first of all, I think those are apples and orange comparisons, but I think both of them have their place in county government.
Right. And, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
And I agree with you. I agree with my colleague, but at the same time, it just doesn't make quite the sense because all the open space that was given at 3.65 and a quarter million dollars was, is surrounded by houses, and if anything, they're only a one-acre lot, 1.2-acre lots, so you'd only be able to put one house on it. So, but anyway, that said, I just think we could use, we could better, we could have better responsibility with the taxpayer money, instead of buying three acres and giving away six, when we can use that. I think it's just a better way to do. But yes, many times, my constituents have spoke to me about log shoals, and every time I speak to them, log shoals comes up. Thank you.
And I will just point out, the only thing, and this is just coming from memory, so I apologize if I'm off, but the land that we gave to GCRNA, it was in a pretty blighted area to some degree, correct? So we couldn't use it for any green space. It was basically, it could be housing, and no commercial could be there either. So I just, just for the record, I just wanted to state that.
For the record, if I could make a comment to that?
Sir, absolutely.
But any blighted area could have a TIF if it's available. You know, we could work on that development, too, as the schools district showed us that. But whether it's in a blithe area or not, it's still open space. I mean, that's what we're, the whole charter was set up for the HNRT, to preserve open space. So we either preserve open space or selectively preserve open space. If that's the case, we need to change their ordinance.
Thank you, Counselor Collins. Anybody else?
Roll call.
Not roll call's been requested. Counselor McGahey.
No. I just want to make a difference.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven in favor, four in opposition, one absent.
Thank you. Motion passes. We will move to the next agenda item, which is Committee Reports. From Committee of the Whole, we have first the County Attorney Employment Contract. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the Committee, I move to approve the County Attorney's Employment Contract as discussed and approved in the Community of the Whole.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to hold.
All right.
I feel like we haven't had enough time. It's a very important hire and decision, mostly the terms of it. I don't, I'm not having objection to the individual involved, but I think council should more carefully consider the terms of that contract. So for that, I'd like to give us some more time to hold it and come back in two weeks or a month.
All right. Counselor Tripp.
Thank you. I want to speak against the motion to hold. I think it's delaying what is the appropriate thing to do, and the appropriate thing to do tonight is to pass the employment contract and, you know, maybe give Mr. Antley a big steak dinner, a coupon to big steak dinner with a big thank you for the work that he's done for the county, not hold it up and quibble over some of the things that you quibbled over. So I would ask for a roll call on that motion to hold.
All right. A roll call's been requested for Counselor Shaw's motion. Thank you. The motion fails.
And then a roll call on the vote.
All right. So a roll call has been requested on the, do we have, do we have the motion? All right. Thank you. Got you. So a roll call's been requested.
Mr. Chairman, you have nine in favor, two in opposition, one absent.
Thank you. The motion passes. We will move to the next, under Committee Reports, Committee of the Whole, Council Rules Amendments Deadlines. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the Committee, I move to amend Sections 3B and Sections 4A of the Rules County Councils to reflect the changes outlined in red line version, red line included in the council agenda packet.
All right. Thank you. And I feel like we've went through everything so fast, just for the public that came to listen, just so you know what this one is. This is actually just something we discussed in Committee of the Whole, which is to give a deadline for any kind of things that we present for, to get onto the agenda, so our legal staff has time to look through them and make sure that they're prepared in a timely manner. So I just wanted to clarify that. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under Committee Reports, we have Fire Department Feasibility Study Resolution. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the Committee, I move to adopt the resolution to direct the county administrator to conduct the comprehension study of the Greenville County current system of multiple independent fire sub-districts to identify optional operational finance and government challenges associated with that system, to evaluate the impact of the current structures on insurance services, offices, ISOs, public protection classifications, and to assess the feasibility benefit and the best process for consolidating fire services into a countywide model or other structure options.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion on this one? All in favor of the motion, please say-
Roll call.
Roll call's been requested.
Just a point of information, did he read it as amended the name? It was called a different name? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you have eight in favor, three in opposition, one absent.
All right. Thank you. The motion passes. To the next agenda item, which is Public Comments. Ms. Stone.
Chairman, we have three speakers. The first is Diane Vreeland. Her topic is Issues with Audio Recordings.
Welcome, Ms. Vreeland.
How are you all? Okay, Diane Vreeland, 413 Heather Falls Lane, Simpsonville. On behalf of Greenville County Republican Women, I misspoke at a past council meeting when I stated that Mr. Cannell's contract was up December 31st, 2025. I was wrong. Mr. Cannell shall serve at the pleasure of the council through the date of his contract period of his employment, January 20th, 2026, after which Mr. Cannell's agreement/contract may be extended at the discretion of the council. I apologize for any inconvenience my erroneous statement has caused. Now to move on to the subject at hand. At the September 16th, 2025, regular council meeting, I gave a speech on cluster developments. When I finished, I sat down and my phone immediately went off. It was a friend telling me that my speech was muted in the middle of the speech, and sound did not resume until the next speaker. After the meeting, I walked over to Bob Mahalik and told him what had happened. He told me everything was good in the control room, and he assured me that there would not be a problem with the YouTube stream. I thanked him, and I walked away. As it turns out, part of the speech I gave was still muted on the YouTube stream. I am not a conspiracy theorist, but I also do not believe in coincidences. So I would like to reread the omitted part of my speech. I hope in the spirit of transparency, you allow me to do this now. Quote, "Recently, I have been asked by some of your constituents if developers had made contributions to current and past council members' campaigns, and other people have approached me and stated that some of you have accepted contributions in the past. I have no idea, but would like you all to go on the record here today and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. Does the public have a right to know? You tell me." End quote. I go on to say regarding cluster development ordinance, quote, "In closing, I would like to publicly thank the council members who will vote to approve this ordinance tonight and ask those who vote against approval to state their reasoning, what the reasoning was for doing so. It is my belief that the public has a right to know." End quote. So thank you for allowing me to place this on the record, and I'd like to hand a copy of my statement to the clerk, so it's part of the public record, and I thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Vreeland.
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor McGahey.
If I can make a quick comment, that, thank you, Ms. Vreeland. That's great, because if you want to see who gives to people, it's online, so I'm taking my pulpit here as a chance to educate people. Every donation made to a candidate has to be listed in the South Carolina Ethics Public Reporting website. You can find it at ethicsfiling.sc.gov. You can go on there, you can see every person across the whole state, from the governor down to us. You can see everything, our disclosures, our campaign disclosures, how much we get from who. It's the amount, their address, and who they are. So all that is out there, so I appreciate you bringing that up and giving me the opportunity to educate the public, and obviously, if you have any questions, call the person that you represent and ask them. But all the information's there, you can look it up. If you want to get this afterwards, I'll stay after and show you how to do it. Thank you for allowing me to do that.
Thank you, Counselor McGahey, and thank you, Ms. Vreeland, for bringing that to our attention, and we'll make sure, obviously, in audio world, things go crazy, but we will make sure that we fix that in the future. Next, Ms. Stone.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Ed Paxton, and his topic is Greater Greenville Sanitation Commissioners.
Welcome, Mr. Paxton.
Yee-loo. The Greater Greenville Sanitation Commission is on the threshold of wasting millions of dollars of her customers' money by building a trans loader for household garbage near the Pickens County Line and South Carolina 124. The economics of this undertaking doesn't fly, but they want it. They don't need it, they simply want it. If the site they had chosen were 12 miles further away from the Twin Chimneys landfill, the loader would be a sane undertaking. Today, it's an ego kicker and a power trip for DEHAC and Greater Greenville Commissioners and their chosen bull, and we, the people, in their service area, have no way to stop this predatory undertaking. Greater Greenville is a legislative-created commission, and the commissioners you nominate create their own rules and take from the constituency like a tomcat takes during mating You people recently permitted them to create $20 million in bond money for the project, and we're talking about a total of $35 million for this campus development. I have no problem with providing their needs for a new repair shop or an adjacent office building, but the trans loader is a colossal mistake, and it needs to be stopped. It's a waste of money. This loader is not needed. As I said, it's an ego kicker for a bunch of predators whose only interest is in the paycheck they get for attending a 20-minute monthly meeting. On top of that, they bought 146 acres for the development, which could easily be done on 40 acres. And they lied to the people early on about their intentions for the site at a community meeting. Folks, this is the heart of corruption in Greenville County. I ask you to do something about it.
Thank you, Mr. Paxton. Next, Ms. Stone.
Mr. Chairman, the last speaker is Darlene Pace, and her topic is Concerns of Growth.
Welcome, Ms. Pace.
I'm sure you are aware the developer, Cottage Green in Worsheza-Malden, has requested a deferment until Malden's next council meeting, 10/20/2025, due to the extra cost of $2.5 million in acreage shortage. This development needs to be kept before all council members. I know there is communication between Greenville and Malden council members, as should be, and I've seen Malden council members here, but I have not seen the Greenville council members at Malden council meetings. There's a lot of development happening in Greenville, Malden, Simpsonville, and Pima. I've seen the blue and orange signs advertising development, but before I can get the needed information by calling that number 864-467-7425, about one, another sign has popped up, and then the land is developed. Communication has been difficult with district representatives for this area. Many constituents have voiced that they are not even aware of who their representative is. Others have stated that they have vote, that they vote, but the same people continue winning. I know Greenville has no jurisdiction over what Malden does, but we're asking Greenville representatives- representatives to please speak with your constituents on, on behalf of Malden council members. They hear us, but they're not listening. The development on Fork Show Road, Ashmore Bridge, and Reedy Fork Road will impede the health and safety of its residents. The possible development of the Cottage Green, over 500 resident rental units in Malden, has already started building its first phase on Harris Bridge Road in Simpsonville. I suggest you drive and see the mass destruction of land. Development is inevitable. That's how Harrington Development got there. We're part of the problem, but we can also be part of the solution. Several residents have suggested making the area next to Spinks some sort of green space, park. We're not getting any more land. We were given dominion over the earth. I have to ask myself, and I suggest that you ask yourself also, have we been good stewards? One more thought. Only when the last tree is dead, the last river is dammed, the last field is paved over, will we realize we can't eat money.
Thank you, Ms. Pace. All right, next on the agenda, we have administrators' report.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, real short and sweet this evening. I just want to alert you that I will be bringing the fiscal 2027 budget to council next council meeting, the October 21st. Really not much of a change from what you've seen that we presented earlier, except with the changes that council made with the last budget that affected it rolls through, and we got some updated numbers, and I think Abbott will be very happy with what we have to present. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have requests and motions by council members, and we'll start with A, Counselor Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to open a special 10-day application period for the Greenville Technical College Area Commission in order to fill one vacancy due to a recent resignation.
Thank you. Everybody understand the motion?
Would you take a friendly amendment to 30 days?
I mean, I feel like 10 days seems perfectly adequate in order to receive applications, and if for some reason we don't, I would certainly be open to extending it after the initial 10-day period.
It'd just be really nice for the public to get a chance. That's a pretty important commission seat there.
I will certainly ask that the county administrator make sure that we advertise adequately on our website and social, and certainly via the live stream, and I would also encourage each of us to share the open vacancy on our own social platforms as well.
Counsel Tripp. That's, uh, he was, what, I'll, I'll share. What he was asking is, isn't it standard typically for a 10-day period, which was going to be my next question to legal, is when we typically have these emergency openings, isn't it usually 10 days?
Yeah, a lot of times, because you're dealing with either a quorum issue or something like that, the typical thing has been a shortened time, like 10 days. That's correct. On, on, when we have a vacancy that has to be filled in on board like that.
Right, okay, thank you.
Well, respectfully, yeah, my voters didn't put me in to do things as things have always been done to go against status quo. I think this is a very important seat, and why not give it 30 days? Are we only making it 10 days by tradition for some legal reason, or is it just that's what tradition is?
As far as accommodating a quorum issue, it may not be a legal issue from our standpoint, but it certainly would be for the board's standpoint that's, that's empty if they can't make decisions. But other than that, that would be, and also, I can't speak, there may be many other reasons that predate my time as county attorney as to why that was developed. That's just the way it was developed, but the one I'm aware of is certainly the concerns about a quorum in the interim when that's happening.
Have, have you heard concerns about a quorum?
I have not been talking to anybody with regard to whether there's a concern about a quorum in this particular instance, but somebody else may have more information.
Mr. Administrator?
Yeah, I believe it is your policy.
Okay, so it's in, it is in the county policy? Okay.
What, I'm sorry, which county policy?
Boards and commissions.
The boards and commission policy says?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Shaw, the board and commission policy says when you open an emergency ordinance or emergency application period, it is for 10 days to fill a vacancy that creates a quorum issue or for jointly represented boards, which Greenville Tech is.
Okay, and I, have we have any kind of written indication that there's a quorum problem, or any of those two exceptions?
It's for both.
No, I know, it's for both. Have we, have those exceptions arisen?
Uh, Mr. Shaw, there is not a quorum issue, but it is a jointly represented board, which also falls within that section of the policy.
You mean city, city?
It could be for either of those situations, either a quorum issue or a joint board having a vacancy.
City, county jointly, is that what you mean? Okay, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would argue that his request or motion is out of order because it violates our policy.
I was going to ask, that would be my next question. We would have to essentially suspend rules and all kinds of other processes to make this work.
I'll withdraw the friendly motion, but I, it is a concern.
A point of order, I believe it's, it's, it's a policy that I'm ordering, so we don't have to follow rules to change it.
It's a policy, so I, I think it'd be out of order. We'd be violating our own policy unless we waive that policy.
I always think it's best to affirm with legal anytime we get into these friendly discussions.
Right, yeah, I mean, the point of order's been made that you all have a policy that requires 10 days and absent a determination otherwise by, by the chair, that the, that that is somehow in order. I mean, all of the policy certainly is the normal order.
And I would just assume that if the, the board was requesting to begin the process, that there's obviously a reason they want to begin that process, so I would say that we adhere to the 10 days.
I just worry about.
All right, anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
Counsel Farmer?
Um, Ms. Seaman, um, is this 10 business days, or is this just 10 days straight?
I believe business days.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, business days.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's not, I'm sorry.
I'm not?
Well, I shouldn't, I, yeah, I should defer to the, but, I mean.
Chairman, Mr. Farmer, it is 10 days. Everything is automated now, so we don't have to, we're not structured to the.
That's true, online. Thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. Farmer, for misspeaking.
All right.
I'll never forgive you for that.
All right, anybody else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Collins.
Um, I had an item that was removed from the agenda as far as the Planning Commission realignment amendment, and I understand, you know, I just want to clarify this, that when the Planning Commission was realigned in 2001, it took some, or 2007.
One second, Ms. Collins, just to make sure I don't do any, we, we probably have to act on this motion, and then I would definitely.
Oh, do the motion?
Yeah, yeah, and then I'll, I'll come back to you, and then we'll go to B.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Please forgive.
Just make sure we're in order there. All right, so on item A, from Counselor Seaman, everybody understand the motion to open the special application period for an unexpired term on the Greenville County Technical College Area Commission. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and now we'll turn it over to Counselor Collins.
Are you sure? No, I'm just kidding. Thank you. Uh, it's always good to have a sense of humor, especially when you're trying to work with colleagues of different persuasion. But anyway, I had a gem, an amendment I filed about a month or so ago, it's to realign the Planning Commission back to 2001 under the original ordinance, and it was not in totality, so basically it was saying that we're going to take a look at it, get a human resource, uh, uh, company or someone that does that and come out and say, here's the statute, here's where we're at, how can you better serve the realignment issue, but yet kind of keep some of the places and people intact? Okay, so that's it, and it's good, and if you, all you gotta do is look around to see that our style has went, has surpassed our infrastructure, and I understand there's a lot of variables to that, but this is what, so I had to withdraw that because there is a motion filed in the, as a common plea, and let me just read this real quick, if I may. So, there's, um, "Many who publicly object to the sewer expansion is issue as verbalized support for litigation." Okay, so this is what happens, um, when I filed my amendment five or so weeks ago, had it written up, and we decided to drop it, um, and I wanted no affiliation with the legal standard that was in the court with the sewer or the planning commission. All right, so, and it was identified in a John Doe, um, way that says, um, those, they do not wish to become alienated from government defendants, especially from newly-elected council members of whom certain plaintiffs in spirit, okay? And in spirit would probably indicate to anyone on a public realm that says, well, I put in a, an amendment to realign the Planning Commission in feasibility, so I just want to make that publicly known. There was no coercion, there was no working with, or no, nothing done beyond my colleagues' back to undermine the credibility of not just mine, but this council. So, I wanted to make that publicly, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Counsel.
So, that's why we withdrew that.
Absolutely, thank you.
There will be another time.
Wait, wait. Um, all right, we'll move to the next item, which is B.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just.
Counsel McGee.
Just may I ask, uh, who resigned, and when does their term expire?
We're back to A.
Okay, so, the, it is not an unexpired term, it was Mr. Hunter, I believe?
When does his term expire? Yeah, not expired, but, you know?
Um, Mr. Beddingfield's here, he might be able to, do you happen to know offhand?
I don't.
Okay, that's not important, I just thought maybe I could.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Okay, all right. All right. Regina does know, would you like to go ahead and speak to that before we move on?
Mr. Chairman, it was the resignation of Hunter Howard, and I believe his term did expire November of '27.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is motion to reconsider the third reading action taken on September 16th, 2025, for item 10, text amendment, Article 4, definition, Article 6, Table 6.1 and Article 8, Section 8.5, ESD PM, environmentally sensitive District, Paris Mountain. And I would like to, before Counselor Shaw is going to take this one, but just to address in the last council meeting, Counselor McGee actually rightly pointed out that we had some language in this ordinance that wasn't supposed to be there, and so we didn't catch it at the time. We actually passed the amendment, and now, so what we're getting ready to do is a process of reconsidering it so we can address it, but I wanted to make sure that the public knew that Counselor McGee had correctly found that and pointed it out, and none of us actually caught it, so thank you for that. Counselor Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the council reconsider the vote to adopt ordinance number 5733, zoning docket CZ 2025-053, the environmentally sensitive District, Paris Mountain, ESD PM, a zoning text amendment ordinance, which council adopted at third reading during the previous regular meeting on September 16th, 2025. I bring this motion because new information was discovered after the vote that due to a clerical error, the September 16th, 2025 council agenda included an earlier version of the proposed ESD PM text amendment and not the version approved by the council at second reading on September 2, 2025. And, um.
Thank you.
The simple, the, the thing, the, the version that showed up on the agenda online was different from what we had passed, so we're just correcting a Scrivener's error.
All right, any discussion on this motion?
Scrivener's error, was there some substantive in there that?
Well, a Scrivener's error, or was there something that was substantive that needed to be corrected?
Well, the attorney, a county attorney, is calling it a Scrivener's error. I, like you said, um, what happened was whatever, it was an error in the posting of it, so I don't know if that would be considered a clerk's error. The, the posted one was different from the one we in fact knew it we were passing, and we passed it the previous meeting.
Right, but what was different? I, I'm, I, no conspiracy here, I'm just trying to figure out what, what you caught.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, no, if I may, please. Uh, we passed it second reading, we took out verbiage of short-term rental verbiage, uh, because we do not have a policy, and I felt it was not smart to have a, some language in an ordinance that we don't address in a policy or have any language for in our ordinances, so that was taken out. We called it at the meeting, and I tried to make the amendment then, but they thought the cleaner way was to pass it and then come back and reconsider it and take it out now.
We're taking out?
Language on short-term, short-term rental language that was in there.
Yeah, all right.
Is that, is that a fair assessment?
The.
Mr. Attorney.
Now, what, what ended up happening is after the meeting, Mr. McGee was right, he, he, there was a part that he pointed out that was not in there, we were surprised it was in there, and then we determined after the fact that, after the vote, that there was a clerical error, and that what showed up in the agenda for the last meeting was actually, there's been many iterations of this, as it's grown and, and over time, and a clerical error occurred where the, a version of it, it was not the version that was at second reading and approved, got inserted into the agenda when the packet was put together inadvertently, apparently, and then that's what ended up on the agenda that was in front of people. So, it did have other things, like it had some language with regard to Tree Save as well, and some other things, and so I think already there had been some questions brought up enough about it that the plan had been already announced, that there was a plan to go ahead and maybe reconsider and, and just clean it up, and so in the interim, what's happened is Mr. Shaw has taken lead on this to go ahead and reconsider here, and then so, you know, and it was not a Scrivener's error, that would be something I don't even know that we'd need to be here for, but because the document was just, just happened to be the wrong document, it's just to take it back, reconsider, and just transparently in front of everybody with every document, that's why they're all listed on this agenda, go back through each step, just so everybody knows what everybody's doing publicly and y'all, and that's where we are.
Counsel, Counsel Seaman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, but for clear, so from my clarification, all of the versions that are in the packet still have the short-term rental language in them.
They do, but the short-term rental language that was removed, they always had short-term, at second reading, y'all approved a version that had short-term rental. The short-term rental language that approved, that appeared in the older version that did not make it out of second reading dealt more with, one provision was, I think, something akin to if you wanted to do a short-term rental, you had to own and list a in the property right next door to it, or something like that, and I think that was the initial problem that Mr. McGee caught, so it, it was never wiped out, like second reading had what appears here now as short-term rental language in it, it had it in there, y'all approved that as second reading. What appeared at third reading, though, went backwards and included even more stuff in short-term rental that didn't come out.
It would, so, and I'm happy to continue going, because I know that Mr. Shaw's got another motion after we approve this, which I, do you think we should do? It would just be my preference that all that short-term rental language is out. I mean, I think part of our conversation was because the county doesn't have a policy on short-term rental, how can we even have it in this ordinance at all, in any, in any form? But I'm in favor of the motion to reconsider.
Okay, did you need a response? Are you, you good?
I think, yeah, I think we're ready to move forward with the motion.
Okay, thank you.
And if there's no other discussion, all in favor of the motion?
I would encourage everybody to vote yes.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so the text amendment ordinance is back at third reading now, and we will move to motion two.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to amend the ESD PM zoning text amendment, zoning docket CZ 2025-053, to include the changes approved by the council at second reading, and to add 8.8 colon 5.10D to the Tree Save and Tree Preservation article. These amendments are presented on the agenda as proposed ordinance redlined and as a clean version, proposed ordinance clean, that you have been copied with. and as a clean version proposed ordinance clean that you have been copied with.
All right, thank you. Everybody understand the motion or have any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Counselor McGee?
Make sure with the county attorney, it still reads, and I thought, there have been so many iterations, but I want to make sure because we, in 8.512, we say short-term rentals. If a short-term rental allows household, where else in county ordinance or anywhere policy do we define a short-term rental?
I'm not aware of any other place that we do that.
So, I agree, so I would make a motion to, is it to amend the amendment after he passes it, correct?
Maybe Mr. Shaw could tack onto his amendment right now, and also to delete Section 8.5, 8.512.
Okay, thank you. Can I just ask the attorney to speak up when you talk? I don't hear your reactions.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. In favor of leaving it like it is, I mean, we've all already voted this in last time, and it just simply has to deal with garbage next to your house in a bear-proof container and guests not parking all over our county roads. Now, remember, we can pass something, and it is valid until found to be not valid. I certainly do appreciate the ad hoc committee going to look into all this, but can we just pass it now, and then, you know, if somebody brings an issue up, we'll deal with it then?
May I offer another amendment to you then, Mr. Shaw? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I may, may we change the first paragraph of, just take that out of 8.512, rename it rentals? And then if any rental allows household, any rental, take out the word short-term.
Okay, yeah, I agree.
Would that be sufficient for everybody?
Sure, any rental.
Okay, let's, if you could add that to your amendment, I think that would solve the problem for us.
Would you like to add that to the amendment before we?
Yes.
Does that, Mr. Chairman, does that create even more problems, though? How many rental houses are up there, and there's, I mean, that could, that could create an even bigger problem, potentially? Because we do have stuff on the books on rentals.
I'll make a friendly suggestion amidst the friendly amendments. The announcement that I'm going to make after this pertains to the new ad hoc committee to address short-term rentals, in which, once they get done, we could always come back and adjust this accordingly and have this be part of the information.
I, I understand the thinking, I just, I would rather it just stay like it is. I think we can, I think we can do this like it is. So I'd just encourage you to vote yes, then we can, you know, we tweak things all the time. I've done it for the last five years on council. But this would be presumed, I mean, it's pretty much your garbage, guest parking, and that's it.
Mr. Chairman? I mean, you're a lawyer, so if you, if I came to court and said, well, I rented it for three days, and you're like, well, that's short-term, I'm, no, short-term's one day, three days is a long time. How would that get argued in court, Mr. Shaw?
Well, first of all, somebody's got to bring it to court, so that's a big deal, a big expense, a major deal. Most people work stuff out without anything, without going to court, they work it out by talking. If they do go to court, then you would just have a judge, and judge would use common sense and plain English there.
Mr. Chairman, question for the attorney. Is there not any reason why we can't pass Mr. Shaw's amendment and then just have another amendment that deals with this?
No, if you pass that amendment, and then you could, I guess, yeah, move to amend and amend it out. Normally, we do it as an amendment to the amendment. And even if he gets to that amendment, you could put, you could also just, let's say that Mr. Shaw's amendment is exactly as he just stated, somebody can then, before that vote, can move to amend that amendment to add that. That would have to be considered first, and then it would give, whether that went through or not, let's assume it did, it would then amend it, and then it would come through the way the Second Amendment controlled it. And if it didn't, then it would be as Mr. Shaw stated, which you could do it the other way, too.
Admit how confused I'm about to be and ask another question because if we were to amend and then take another amendment, would we do that before we move to the third motion, which is still to come?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I was clear.
So call the question on Mr. Shaw's amendment, and then either Kurt or myself would like to make an amendment to remove that language.
All right, everybody understand the motion we are currently on?
Mr. Chairman, would you like to make a motion to amend the amendment? Oh, no, we had to wait till we vote, I'm sorry.
So this is, this is the second motion, just to be clear.
It's all right.
And then we will move forward with all of the extras that we're about to entertain for everybody's enjoyment. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank the Lord, the ayes have it?
I'd like, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the amendment to abolish the verbiage in 8.512 short-term rentals, but put a, whatever the attorney says, this is a placeholder after the county develops its policy.
I guess just how would the wording need to be so it wouldn't incorporate any rentals in general in the area?
I mean, you're talking about taking out 8.512 all the way up the road.
Taking the verbiage out, but leaving that there as a placeholder until we have our policy in place.
We leave it, we leave it and put in brackets since intentionally left blank, but it's in a position so it can be filled again later.
Yes, that way we have our policy and our ordinance aligned.
Does everybody understand the amendment to the amendment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it? Now we will move to...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, amendment? No, I saw Mr. Tripp down there. Motion number three, I move to adopt the ESD PM zoning text amendment, zoning docket CZ 2025-053, as amended.
Does everybody understand this motion? I think you're lying, but I'll trust you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? And now I will mention that we have created an ad hoc committee to study short-term rentals in Greenville County because we do not have currently anything on the books to really address it, which was the reason for this back and forth. But hopefully, with our new ad hoc committee, we'll be able to dive into that and have policies that are more enforceable, and will be able to keep us from having 17 emotions, emotions and motions like we just had. Is there anything else any council member would like to share during this portion of the agenda? Hearing none, I will move to the final adjournment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.